I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk of council to call the roll, please.
Mr. Pratherch?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Snively?
Here.
Okay, if you would care to join us, we will do the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So much.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Thank you. We have three proclamations to read tonight. The first, whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, in which six million were murdered, and Roma, gypsies, people with disabilities, and Poles were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons, and millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents, also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the history of the Holocaust offers an opportunity to reflect on the moral responsibilities of individual societies and government, and whereas we, the people of the city of Oxford, should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny, and actively rededicate ourselves to the principles of individual freedom in a just society. And whereas the days of remembrance have been set aside to remember the victims of the Holocaust as well as to reflect on the need for respect of all people, and whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust to be Sunday, April 16th through Sunday, April 23rd, 2023, including the day of remembrance known as Yom Hashoah, April 18th, 2023. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, do hereby proclaim the week of Sunday, April 16th through Sunday, April 23rd, 2023, as days of remembrance in honors of the victims, survivors, rescuers, and liberators of the Holocaust, and further proclaim that we, as citizens of the city of Oxford, should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. I think there is someone to receive this.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Snively. Thank you to the Oxford City Council for your continued support of the Jewish community here in Oxford and at Miami University. It is much appreciated. There are always new faces on the council. There are always new people in the community, new students on campus. But it means a great deal to us in a difficult time to be a Jewish person in America, a Jewish student on Miami's campus, to have your support. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Would we allow the clap? Yeah. All right. Whereas Miami University graduate Jeffrey Hartman helped found and continues to co-lead the nonprofit organization Ukrainian Action to support the people of Ukraine in their time of greatest need. And whereas every month, the organization buys pickup trucks and fills them with humanitarian supplies and drives them across Europe to the Ukrainian border. And whereas the trucks and supplies are donated to the brave and vulnerable people of Ukraine through a trusted network of friends and colleagues that Jeff Hartman personally knows from his time as a Peace Corps volunteer in Ukraine. And whereas since March 2022, they raised over $1.8 million and bought over 118 trucks, which volunteers drove laden with critical humanitarian and medical supplies from London to contacts in Kiev and in central western Ukraine. And whereas Ukrainian Action has also partnered with Water Mission to deliver and install water purification systems across the country. The living water treatment system is essentially a miniature water treatment plant that can purify more than 10,000 gallons of water per day, enough drinking water for 5,000 people. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, hereby proclaim Monday, April 17th, as Ukrainian Action Day in the city of Oxford, and encourage freedom-loving Oxford residents to attend the Wilts Lecture on Miami's campus that evening, and support Ukrainian Action and the people of Ukraine in whatever way they can. Mr. Hartman is here. And this is Natasha Hartman.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here for Ukrainian Action Day. I graduated from Miami University in 2001 and was a Peace Corps volunteer in Ukraine from 2002 to 2004. Just over one year ago, I set out with my wife to raise $10,000 and deliver one pickup truck loaded with supplies from London to my friends in Ukraine, whose lives were disrupted by the war. Over the past 12 months, we've now raised over $2.5 million US dollars, donated over 150 vehicles, and over 130 generators to Ukraine, as well as donated around $30,000 US dollars in grant funding to local charities. We have welcomed over 1,000 donors, over 200 volunteers, and this is all testament to the growing network that we are proud to call Ukrainian Action. We are incredibly pleased and honored to begin the relationship with the city of Oxford for the benefit of Ukraine. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jeff and Natasha. It's great to have you in. And we have a third proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, I should say, I graduated from the University of Nebraska. They needed every tree. Whereas trees can produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, and help to absorb rainwater and slow the velocity of stormwater runoff. And whereas trees are our resource, providing us with wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, paper, and countless other wood products. And whereas associated with the management of some 3,560 street, park, and public trees in the community, the city of Oxford has fulfilled the National Arbor Day Foundation's requirements for Tree City USA for 27 consecutive years. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, Tree City USA, do hereby proclaim that on April 28th, 2023, the last Friday of the month, the city of Oxford will recognize and participate in the national and international celebration of Arbor Day, and I encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It's much appreciated. And now, we have a presentation by Kim Daggy of Enjoy Oxford. Kim, it's nice to have you here.
I'll adjust this for short people. Thank you for having me this evening, Mayor Snively, council members. Kim Daggy, Executive Director of Enjoy Oxford. I, first of all, want to say and extend our condolences.
Thank you.
I will miss Joel Newlin's smile and his hat. And always appreciated. He answered every email and question I ever gave him in a very timely manner. And I'll miss that, so I know how much of an impact this is on all of you, so. Just had a few slides for you today, just an update on Enjoy Oxford, where those of you who don't know are the Oxford Visitors Bureau. Oh, too far. Got it. Not the technically advanced person. I'm proud to say, thanks for all voted, but Enjoy Oxford was voted best in Ohio in the Convention and Visitors Bureau category presented by Ohio Business Magazine, but also accolades were to the Markham Hotel and Conference Center for the meeting and banquet category, so we thought that was pretty cool. Okay, just some stats. Tourism Ohio, these are some overnight statistics as well as day trip values based in 2021. For an overnight stay, you can see in day trips, so both are equivalent or helpful in stimulating the economy. We have recovered in lodging tax, as you know, mainly from statistics given to me by our hotel rep. We've had an 11% increase in occupancy rates, as well as 27% in average daily rate. In comparing 2021 to 2022, we've had 27.6% growth, but if we go back pre-pandemic, we're still at a 4.5% growth from over 2019. And in 2023, in comparison to the first quarter, we've seen about 22%, 23% growth. I think that's the way I hosted, the university hosted both men's and women's MAC Championship Swim Meets this year in the first quarter, and also the increase in confidence in people traveling. Because if you remember last January, we still were gathering loosely, I guess, in some apprehension. Next. And I apologize for the slides. These were created in Canva and didn't quite transfer quite well. But for our website, we do have some increase in our session visits, as well as our users, which is pretty exciting. Our session time, I know that looks like, oh, bummer, red number, but it's only like two seconds. Some ideas we have to increase that, increasing our blog posts. We are fully staffed now, so I have a dedicated person for marketing. So I'll introduce you later in the evening in a slide. And we've also invested in increasing our marketing and promotional effort as far as digital ads, which will hopefully translate to some new users. And you can see our top 10 page counts for the year. And CJ's Bar, who would know, number 10 on the list. But on there, Uptown Music, very proud of that. Dora, as well as Stay Calendar, traditionally in our homepage, usually hit 1 and 2. So that's where we're there. Newsletters, we communicate with the community, as well as the business community. I think we have a stellar opening rate there. It's seen some growth. And in industry average, we're about where we're supposed to be. As far as our demographics, who we reach, primarily female, we've seen some growth. That's supposed to say 3.6, if I can separate the number for you with the graph. And also across the age, we've worked really hard to have some growth in the younger demographics. So you can see, we've had some growth in the 18 to 24 range, as well as working midlife class, 35 to 44, 44 to 45. I think it's a pretty even distribution across overall. We've done some increase in social for Instagram with a link tree, as well as links to our bio, as well as direct URLs in our Facebook, so hopefully generating some traffic that way. And we plan to maintain and also target some of the communications across all ages. One thing we did complete last year was, courtesy of the W. Smith Family Grant, is an update to the Black History Tour. There was some relevant content that we wanted to add. As you can see down at the bottom, and we have, we went through our first set of printing very quickly. So this is another 2,000 copies to distribute throughout the community. That's supposed to say events, in case you couldn't tell. In 2022, the chocolate meltdown was restarted with a whole group of partnerships. I'm not the only one. I'm just a small factor in that. We did have some visits. The 65th Annual Model T came to the community in Butler County at Spooky Nook. They came to Miami University's campus for photo op and to get some donuts from the Oxford coffee shop. And they were a really cute photo op. It was a neat day. A good partnership with our partners at Travel Butler County. Obviously, we have our Red Brook Reunion. We completed the 8th Annual. This year upcoming will be the 9th Annual. We also help support some other events, such as Wine Festival, the Return of Hike-Athon, and also the brand-new Oxtober Fest. One big project, it was my first experience working with a capstone class this past fall. At the time, we were understaffed and wanting to tap into some resources in our community. One thing that they addressed was a website refresh. We had not changed or updated our website since 2019. Part of that through the pandemic, and also recovering financially. One thing that they targeted was having, addressing our menu so it was easier to utilize, as well as navigation and dropdowns for the user. We organized our events and blogs, so it was easier to find information. And we also wanted to add content, and this is built, but it's not released yet. Probably forthcoming in the summer. We also added some new content. They built a brochure for us called Hound Around Town to help our four-legged friends navigate Oxford. We'll be printing that soon. And also a lot of evergreen social content from a student perspective that we can utilize when we do. And then in 2022, inspired obviously by the comprehensive plan, and also you and city council, we'll be working on those forthcoming. We're onboarding two brand-new staff, which they have on-boarded quickly. I forget, they've only been there three months. They've learned and adapted very well, and have made significant contributions to the organization already. We will be releasing the branding video for Enjoy Oxford and having that on the website when it comes out in a few weeks. We'll concentrate on our visitor experience and those who come to our community. We've had some one-on-one meetings with our hotel community and getting some individual feedback from them is how we can better assist and help in that industry, and also restarting the Ambassador Saturdays that we had prior to the pandemic and interacting with the community on Saturday mornings. We have contributed towards our advertising and promotion budget and have grown that by 10%. We're contributing about 30% of our budget towards those efforts. A few things that we've added are our membership to Tri-State Trails, Sherpa, which is a platform to get us user-generated content hosted on our website, several different blog posts and things like that, so that'll be really exciting for us. And we've invested in more print and digital advertising Ohio Magazine and some Edible Ohio, if we have any readers out there, so look forth for our ads in those areas. I just listed down at the bottom, some events and partnerships. It's a wonderful place to work in this community. We all work together in the community that we love. One thing that I did not put on there was Ohio Tourism Day. We will be taking a staff field trip down to our state Capitol and representing Oxford with a booth. We did have to apply for that, and we were granted in, so we're really excited. And lastly, you're all invited, obviously, to the Uptown Music Concert Series. It will start on May 1st, and also the Red Brook Reunion. And I did bring some new chip clips for you all, so you take one home. So you, when we get those, you can post them on your fridge and remember to come. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Kim. Kim told me earlier today that she loves public speaking, and this is one of the things that she looks forward to every year, so you did a very nice job.
Can I just note that I remember when I came to Oxford, if you wanted to get materials, the Oxford Convention Visitors Bureau had a website, and you clicked a button and they would mail you a packet of stuff. And that was very quaint, but we've come a long way in the last 10 or 15 years. And, you know, Oxford has an amazing offering of things for, you know, if you visit other college towns, you see, come back to Oxford, like, yeah, Oxford's got a ton of great stuff to do, and we communicate it a lot better. So thank you to Enjoy Oxford for helping tell our story to people a lot.
You're welcome. You can still click on the website and join.
And that's okay. Still click, yes.
Thank you very much. All right. At this time, we will move to public comments. Anyone wishing to address council about items that are not on tonight's agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, you can come forward at this time. Give us your name and where you live for the record, and we'll give you five minutes. I see somebody right there, okay?
Hello. So I should state my name for the record?
Yes.
My name is Michael Edwards.
And you live?
I live in 61 Christopher Drive in Oxford, Ohio.
Thank you.
I wanted, I wanted to talk tonight a little bit about Senate Bill 83. I'm going to give some testimony tomorrow at the Ohio State House. I saw this as an opportunity to share my words with you. So I'm going to read this prepared statement. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. My name is Michael Todd Edwards. I'm an education professor at Miami University in Oxford, Ohio. And a lifelong Ohio resident, I'm here today to provide testimony against Senate Bill 83 and its companion bill in the Ohio House. The bill is misguided, as it would negatively impact academic collaboration and the valuable cultural exchange between Ohio's public institutions and China. I urge you to consider the consequences of this bill on our academic community, our students, and our global relationships. I'd like to share with you my experiences collaborating with Zhong Yong, a Chinese mathematician, which have greatly enriched both my professional and my personal life. Our collaboration began back in 2017, when Zhong reached out to me to better understand the mathematical backgrounds of students that we shared at Miami University. Over a two-week period, we visited 10 different high schools, observed numerous math lessons being taught, and ultimately wrote papers about our experiences. In the Ohio Journal of School Math, Zhong's background and perspective challenged my pedagogical habits, making me a better teacher in the process. His desire to learn and ask questions prompted me to think differently and more critically about the current state of affairs in the United States schools. Our relationship has demonstrated the importance of fostering international collaborations for the benefit of our students, our institutions, and our own professional growth. When Zhong moved back to China in 2018, we continued to collaborate despite geographic barriers. Working with Zhong has not only improved my teaching, but also expanded my knowledge of mathematics and research. We've published articles together, engaged in research projects, presented at conferences. Our collaboration has helped me better support international students on campus, understand their challenges, such as parental pressure and high-stakes testing. Moreover, Zhong has introduced me to various artificial intelligence tools to explore research-level mathematics, further enhancing my professional growth. Together, we've explored innovative approaches to teaching, such as using language-independent board games to teach problem-solving, proof, and argumentation, while fostering empathy in American students towards those learning English as another language. Our work has directly benefited our students, our institutions, and the broader educational community. Senate Bill 83 would put an abrupt end to such valuable collaborations. By banning academic and financial relationships with scholars in China, this bill would deprive Ohio's public institutions of the rich cultural exchange and intellectual diversity that are vital for our growth as educators and learners. In conclusion, I urge you to consider the detrimental effects of Senate Bill 83 on Ohio's academic community and the broader implications for global relationships. Instead of severing ties with China, we should work together to address the world's most pressing issues, such as climate change, global pandemics, and territorial disputes. We need to have a better understanding of each other's cultures if we want to work together and make the world a better place. I ask you to consider my testimony and vote no on this bill to preserve the invaluable opportunities that international collaboration offers to students, educators, and society. Thank you for your attention and taking the time to consider the future of our academic community in Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Chris?
Good evening. My name is Chris Scoglan, and I live at 211 Ryan Drive, Oxford. I'm here tonight representing the Historic and Architectural Preservation Commission, requesting the city council consider taking actions regarding the building at 131 West High Street. Let me do provide some background. HAPC became involved in this since the property is located within the Uptown Historic District. The building did not require review and approval from any other board, commission, or city council. The property owner developer came before HAPC, seeking a certificate of approval. This was granted at December 16th, 2019. According to the city ordinance, the applicants have one year to obtain a building permit, and then two years to complete the construction, including satisfactory completion of all required inspections, acquisition of all applicable permits, and lastly, obtaining a certificate of occupancy. The building permit was issued on April 30th, 2021, and the building was to be completed, is to be completed by April 30th, 2023. The ordinance does allow for the applicant to request an extension, yet to date, they have not done so. In the meantime, without the above-mentioned inspections, permits, or certificate of occupancy, the property owner developer has allowed tenants to occupy the residential units beginning in October 2022, and began collecting rents. Since then, while a few of the inspections have been completed, not all required permits have been issued, and the certificate of occupancy has not been obtained. Within the past month, one of the commercial tenants has begun build-out, signage installed, and preparations made to occupy the leased space. The outstanding inspection- The outstanding inspections, permits, and lack of a certificate of occupancy remain outstanding. This building is literally in the shadows of the Oxford, the City of Oxford Building, yet the property owner developer has shown their unwillingness to follow the city's requirement as regards inspections, permits, and most importantly, a certificate of occupancy. This is a major concern to HAPC as it creates a situation where the property owners' developers in the future may also elect to disregard city requirements in respect inspections, permits, and obtaining a certificate of occupancy. I'm here tonight as HBAC is requesting the city council consider taking the following actions as a means of remedying this situation. One, stop the commercial tenant from occupying their leased space until all inspections are completed, permits obtained, and a certificate of occupancy is issued. Stop any other commercial tenant from occupying any space they may lease in the building until all inspections are completed, permits obtained, and a certificate of occupancy is issued. Number three, allow the current tenants in the residential units to remain until the end of the spring semester, May 13, 2023, according to the Miami calendar. Allow them two or three days to vacate the space they have leased, but stop any future occupancy of the residential units until all inspections are completed, permits obtained, and a certificate of occupancy is issued. Number five, seek payment of all applicable fines and penalties from the applicant as they allowed occupancy without first completing all inspections, not obtaining the required permits, and not obtaining a certificate of occupancy. To further incent the building owner developer to complete the outstanding inspections, acquire the permits, and certificate of occupancy, city council should consider shutting off the water service to this property on May 18, May 16, 2023. In closing, HAPC recognizes the importance of working together and partnering with businesses, but that doesn't mean making them happy by bending the rules and relaxing enforcement. Thank you for the privilege of your time tonight.
Thank you, Chris. Much appreciated. I assume that staff will look into this and report back to us by our next meeting. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council tonight? Okay, thank you very much. We will move then to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is approved. We will move to resolutions. Heather, you can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with IPS Group for the purchase of six multi-space meters and 22 single-space meters at a cost not to exceed $56,668.67.
Sarah, motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. JJ, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is part of our 2023 capital improvement budget, something that we have planned for. It's the next phase of our better parking infrastructure that we've completed a large phase previously. So up here, you see the parking improvement area we're talking about. This is a two-fold project. It replaces some of the aging infrastructure, but it also expands the parking area that we're managing. This is in response to the increased demand due to the building that Mr. Scoglan was just talking about with the commercial areas being built out with activity at the Oxford Community Arts Center and then the addition of the College and Elm Building and the expected development that's coming there. So this is the general area. This is the Community Arts Center. These are existing single-space mechanical meters all along here. Part of this project would replace all those meters and then we would expand the managed parking into these areas here. I've got a few more slides that would address that. So the single-space parking area, there's 19 coin-only meters. Replace them with these new IPS credit card meters to give folks more options. They can pay by credit card, by coin, or by a pay-by-phone app. It would be two-hour parking in that area along College Avenue. It'd be 25 cents per hour, so it's the lower rate. There's not that demand that we have in High Street there. And then we would replace these single-space parking meter areas in the 200 block of West High. Those would all be removed and they would be replaced with kiosks, which I'll show you there. And the blue Xs would be the kiosk locations. Again, this is going to service just this south side of the 200 block of West High Street where we have managed parking already. And then this new area along Elm Street, this block on Elm, both sides, and then this north side of Walnut Street. So those kiosks would all service that area. What we're seeing now, right now, if you go over there, is you're seeing cars that are just being parked and taking up all of these spaces on Elm Street, which, you know, currently, that building at College and Elm, it's not really affecting right now. But we're trying to get ahead of this and kind of change the parking culture before that all expands out. And then there's an additional kiosk we're buying that will actually go over into our existing area where we have kiosks in the 500 block of South Campus Avenue. There's an existing area due to Miami's construction of the MU Health Services Building. And the changes in the curb cuts over there, there's now an area where we need kiosks. So as part of this project, one of the purchases will go over there. But this will, again, I think it gets us ahead of the situation that we're going to see in the expansion in that area. We presented this plan to the Oxford Parking and Transportation Board at their most recent meeting. And, you know, the main question is, do we want to expand this? Do we want to manage this area of parking? And they all seemed to agree yes. And we presented this plan and they voted to recommend a city council approval of this plan. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Councilors, questions or comments?
I have a question just related to the four-to-five-hour no parking, and not necessarily in this space, but from my understanding, there's two businesses now that could be open 24 hours a day, right? The poker, whatever they're called, the poker place and then one of the vape shops. So is that, is everything on High can't park between 4:00 and 5:00?
Yeah, there's, right now, there's overnight parking restrictions in like High Street and some of the areas surrounding that. And that overnight parking restriction exists between 4:00 a.m. and 5:30 a.m. The reason that's been in place for some time now, that's due to street cleaning. That's one goal that it does. And it also prevents cars from being stored overnight because there's no, they don't have to pay for parking after 8:00 p.m. So otherwise, what you have is you have tenants who will just occupy that space overnight into the next day. So that's the reason for that. But that's not necessarily part of this project.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about, for those two businesses, is it possible to stagger, like, one side of the street is a different time when you can't be parked?
I think that's something, I mean, it's something we could look into, but I mean, that would, I think we might want to take that, do some careful examination and, you know, take it to Optab and talk more about it.
You know, as I think about it, we, you know, we post, you can't park there, but if someone were running in to pick up an order or something like that, I doubt if we would be so quick to ticket them. But you raise a good point, you know, what about those two businesses? You know, typically, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but if we're sweeping the streets, you know, and there's one car there, I think we would go around it, you know, but, you know.
But overnight storage is...
The overnight storage is the real issue.
Yeah. We run into challenges with places like Starbucks who employees want to, you know, park there so they can open the business so that, you know, our officers at night, you know, they use discretion, but, you know, they have to work within the parameters of the ordinance that's given. But, you know, as more businesses go 24/7, that might be something we have to look at.
So the meters along College are going to remain the same?
No, I might have missed that. They're all going to get, they're going to get replaced with the better meters, but as far as the rate, if that's what you're asking.
No kiosk on College.
Oh, yes. Yeah, right along College Avenue in front of the municipal building or between the municipal building and the Community Arts Center. Just the nature of those marked spaces, we feel, should remain metered, should, single-space meters. However, you know, we can maximize, you know, it's cheaper to use the kiosks, right? And they cover more spaces. So we think that we can do that, accomplish that with all the other sides. But not to confuse people, those on College remain single-space meters.
Yep, that answers my question.
And I just want to kind of address, I know I've had folks from the Community Arts Center say, oh, like, they're kind of concerned about metering. And I ask them to think about the long-term benefits of incentivizing turnover. I mean, the Community Arts Center is not unlike other businesses in which it wants to have spaces available for people to come and go, which in the past was never a problem because they had an off-street lot and then they had ample on-street parking. But I think we've had a taste with the construction down at the Elm Street building of what it's like when there's no spaces available because all the curbside parking is just being occupied by people who are storing their cars long-term or, and then all of a sudden, you can't get to the building you want to get to. So I think it's going to take a little bit of adjustment, but I think this will ensure that people can get to the Community Arts Center. The rates are still very reasonable, you know, it's a quarter, I mean, except on College Avenue, it's a quarter an hour. You can pay with an app, you can get 11 hours' worth, so this will ensure that there's spaces available at relatively minimal cost. And I think, I think most people would think that having a space available at a minimal cost is hopefully better than not being able to get to your kid's piano lesson, so.
Yeah, and it'll remain a quarter an hour on College Avenue as well.
Okay.
It's not going up. It's just two-hour parking to create that turnover there, so.
And I just do encourage people, I mean, as one of those people who has fewer and fewer coins with me, you know, we have the benefit of the smart meters of the kiosks, which can take your credit card, but also if you, you can get the app, which is even easier, and it's just connected with your credit card and you can just, so there's multiple ways to pay. And I appreciate you making the investment, putting in the capital budget, and us making this, moving it forward because I think, yeah, I mean, you had issues with Snazzy Boutique, where they, like, obstruction vehicles parked in front of it. This is going to be a little bit more traffic area, less like a residential area, and a little bit more like, you know, Walnut Street or Church or another commercial street.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yes. I had a conversation with a community member who was asking about why we can't have sort of different rules or standards in the summer when students are not here and there might not be as much of an issue in terms of parking. What is your response to that?
I didn't prepare for that tonight, but we've talked about that before. And I mean, we do have some flexibility with these, the smarter technology. I mean, if we're talking not in this area, but you're talking in the Uptown area, you will still see that in the summer, you know, High Street still remains occupied. So there is that demand. The areas you don't see as occupied well are the 25-cent meters all around. But again, that's something, you know, I don't mean to throw it back at you, but you set the fee ordinance and that's something that if you want to speak up during that, when that comes in November, we can, you know, have a robust debate about it and maybe get a little more research.
One last question. Will the time still be till 8 o'clock? Is it the same time as it is uptown?
Yes, I mean, that's, that all is actually, can be set through city manager directive, but I mean, our plan would be to remain that way unless we see a pattern that's for some reason different.
Jason, did you want to...
Do you want to go first, Mike?
Sure. I just have one concern regarding the parking spaces that are around the Community Arts Center being two-hour spaces. Sometimes they have events that go over two hours. So is that going to be a situation where discretion is used when it comes to adjudication of those things? Or is it something that we should look at, changing that from two to four perhaps to make sure that we can account for any of those situations where we have events in that center that may go over two hours?
Yeah, it's something we could, I mean, we could definitely look at. I mean, if it's, you know, I hear the same thing from family members of mine who it takes longer than two hours to get your hair done at a business uptown, and so why do we, why do we have those meters creating turnover so fast? But it's been a debate we've had before. I think it's hard for us to enforce the two hours, I will say that. So usually, it's a pretty egregious violation if we're writing a ticket for it, but...
Discretion is fine with me.
Yeah.
If that's going to be the method, I'm fine.
Jason?
I was just trying to recall the handicap parking situation.
As far as on the street over here in this area, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know, I believe there's a handicap spot in, right down on this area, is there not, Sam?
There is.
Yeah. And there's, yeah, on College Avenue at the southernmost end of that block. That's not metered, that's just a handicap sign. I, I, there won't, there are not any currently throughout here that I'm aware of, although there may be in there, in the lot of the Community Arts Center, since they have a private parking lot there, I would imagine that they have, yeah.
Would we maintain for the street ones that exist? Would we maintain that for the kiosk situation as well?
Yes. Yeah, the ones that exist will be maintained, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments?
Can I just, since we're talking about parking in the vicinity of the city building, I would remiss to say that I've always had a question about the equity issues of the city serving itself free parking in a way that other businesses are unable to participate in. Because we've had multiple businesses say to us, well, is there some way we could have, like, a permit we could buy so our employees could park? And we say, no, we want to use the meters, and yet we have a separate policy. It's beyond the scope of this conversation, but having been on Optab, like, it all is just, doesn't, the optics of it don't, aren't great, is from my point of view. And I guess I would say if there's, if there's, it's a personnel issue and, or, no, but I also, if council's interested, I mean, it would be interesting, I think, for Optab to look at what would be an equitable way so the city is, just like any other employer, treating everyone fairly in terms of how to handle employee parking on streets. So that's just, I just wanted to mention it since we're all talking about parking in this vicinity. Seems like an issue we should probably talk about, so I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Are you ready to vote? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move to ordinances, first reading.
An ordinance repealing noxious vegetation, Oxford Code Sections 935-19, 935-21, 935-22, and 935-99 due to a redundant code section in Oxford Property Maintenance 1305-02, subsection 302-4.
Okay. Sam, welcome.
Nice job on the reading, Heather. Thank you, Mayor. This is a follow-up from several months ago. You may recall a recommendation from Environmental Commission for Code Amendments to Chapter 935 of Oxford Code regarding improving the clarity and promoting the probability of managed natural lawns in the community. So this first ordinance amendment is actually to do code cleanup, to put the focus on the property maintenance code, which is the section that the enforcement is done under. So this is actually deleting code, which is not something we do very often. So that's the sections that Heather read, they're, it's the older section of code that was superseded by the property maintenance code about five to 10 years later. So there's not a... Uh, so, there's not a need to have two identical code sections.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the, uh, public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, any questions or comments from council? I think we all understand it. Okay. Uh, this will come up for a second reading at our next meeting, and, um, you can read the second one.
An ordinance amending the Oxford Property Maintenance Code, Section 1305-02, to allow for managed natural lawns to exceed the 10-inch height limitation by creating a definition of height expectations.
Okay, thank you. Sam, you want to just explain that?
Sure, thank you. So this is the new wording, uh, this is the minimalistic approach, I will say, that, uh, Assistant City Manager Jessica Green worked with the Environmental Commission and Climate Action Steering Committee on, which is to add language to the, uh, existing, uh, chapter of the property maintenance code that prohibits, uh, grass from exceeding the, uh, 10-inch height limit. And it includes an exemption, so that managed natural lawns, which are not turf grass, would be able to exceed that, and those have to be done in a way that it's not just let turf grass to grow wild. Uh, and so, the intent is for there to be some education around that as well, and so the city manager's office has a communication out right now to retain an entity to do marketing around that. Uh, and so this, uh, this code language would pair with that effort to promote managed natural lawns for pollinator gardens, rain gardens, uh, things like that, that would, um, exceed, uh, what would look like a, a, an existing, um, uh, yard, uh, but would be, uh, still manicured around the edges, it would have, uh, pollinator native plants, not invasive species, not noxious vegetation, so that's the intent for it. Uh, and that would allow the code enforcement officer then to walk on by, uh, which is actually allowed in the current code, uh, but we've had concerns from the community about that not being clear, and so this would draw more attention to that.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Come on up, Peggy.
I wasn't sure if John was coming. Peggy Branstrater, 18 Minute Circle. Uh, this has been a long and winding road, but I think we got here. And we've had many iterations, and we've worked back and forth, and there's been quite a bit of collegiality in back and forth, and I think we've ended up in a much better place than where we started out.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, again, this will come up at our next meeting for second reading and a vote. Now we will move to second reading, so you can read the first one.
An ordinance changing the name of a future private street in the Owl's Landing subdivision, and directing the clerk of council to forward a certified copy of this ordinance to the county engineer.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second. There's a second, thank you. Sam?
Uh, no changes on this, changing Screech Avenue to American Barn Lane, so this is the entrance to Owl's Landing, the street that would intersect with Brookfield Road.
Okay, so no more screeching? Okay. As there, um, there's nobody, I think, from the developer here?
There is, but...
If you want to speak, you have the opportunity, if you want. Okay. And, uh, is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Seeing none, anyone from council wish to further discuss this ordinance? Not seeing any, you may call the roll.
Mr. Pratherich?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted, and we'll go to number two.
An ordinance approving the recommendation of the planning commission to allow for an accessory dwelling unit as a conditional use in the R3 MS zoning district at 20 East Collins Street.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Sam?
The only change to this one is there's a new drawing, uh, but it was explained at the last meeting, I wasn't here, but it's just to have a sidewalk beside the driveway at 20 East Collins for the accessory dwelling unit. It is a separated walkway, uh, it's directly adjacent to the driveway. That was explained last meeting, but there was no drawing in the packet, that's the only change.
Okay, and we went through that in some detail.
Yes.
Okay. Is there, um, anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay, thank you. And, council, any further comment on this one?
Guess, I'd just say that the accessory dwelling unit is something, a word that we, I hope becomes more and more part of our vocabulary. It solves a number of problems that we have in terms of providing missing middle housing, it can be affordable housing, it converts structures that sometimes are underutilized, garages, um, into something that's usable, and it adds density in a way that maintains our historic fabric. So, this is just one example, but, um, uh, it's, it hits on a lot of things, and so I hope we find, find good quality proposals like this in the future.
Okay, thank you. Is there further discussion? You may call the roll.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Pratherich?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes.
And you may read the third.
An ordinance repealing Oxford codified ordinance Section 303-08, entitled Impounding and Booting of Vehicles Redemption, and adopting new Oxford codified ordinance Section 303-08, entitled Impounding and Booting of Vehicles Redemption.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt it?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. TJ?
Uh, no changes from the last meeting. Uh, this would, uh, change the language under, uh, section, subsection K eligibility, from any wrecker service located in the city of Oxford shall be eligible to receive calls from the police division, to any wrecker service located within five miles of the city of Oxford shall be lo, okay, eligible to receive calls, so.
Thank you, no changes. All right. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance?
Good evening.
Come on up, give us your name and where you live.
Travis Refit, uh, 2476 Millville Oxford, just south of town, Refit's Garage and Towing. Familiar faces, again, um, eyes just here, we're the wrecker service that would like to be on your rotation, and, uh, we've wretch out since this problem arose, and I brought it to your guys' attention, uh, one of the biggest thing that everybody here mentioned was the fact of you wanting to keep money in the town, and I understand that completely. Uh, along with that, uh, I kind of got the cart before the horse, but, uh, I got, I took effort and ended up buying a piece of property on Ringwood Road, uh, which is right next to Mayday Gun Range, so we have invested in the city limits, and we now own a commi, piece of commercial property in the city limits. Keep in mind, it is a vacant lot, but we are paying city taxes. We're, I, I don't want to, like, throw it in your face, but like, we're here, you know, that, this is us, we're in it, and, uh, I hope we can serve you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address this ordinance? Yes, come on up.
I would just like to say I support...
Give us your name again.
My name is, uh, Michael Todd Edwards.
Thanks, Mike.
I live at 61 Christopher Drive in Oxford, Ohio, and I support that gentleman's initiative, I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Any further discussion from the public? Counselors?
That's an impressive commitment, um, kind of answering all of our concerns, so thank you.
Well, it does, although if they're in the city, then there's no need for this ordinance.
Is the business itself in the city, or does he just don't?
That's the question.
It is a vacant piece of property.
Uh, you're not recognized at the moment, thank you, Earl.
Well, that's a concern to some of us, but not all of us. I think that we shouldn't put up barriers to entry, as long as the requirements, service cost, resources, uh, safety are all the same, and similar quality. I'm for it.
Well, I guess I would say that I'm, I'm, I'm torn, at, at one level, I really do, I, I like the idea that we would support local, I think there's a public welfare benefit of having companies that are proximate, I mean, the closer they are, the, I mean, in theory, the better the response times are. Um, and so I understand why the city had such a, uh, an ordinance in the past. Um, I also don't think our ordinances should be used to maintain monopolies, and so, and I think, I think competition and redundancy in service is, is good. So, so to me, you know, I, I, I was ready to, to vote for this, even, you know, and I, I, your commitment to owning a piece of property and operating the business, um, again, I, I think that, as the chief, I mean, I think the way our rotation currently goes, I think there'll be plenty of business for CarStar and Oxford Towing Services, they're two separate businesses that operate on the same location, is that right? So, you know, there, they will, there'll be plenty of business for them, and I think this just opens up some space for, for Mr. Refit, so, um, yeah, I don't, I mean, it wasn't exactly broken, but all it would take is one business to go out of business, and then we would be in kind of a difficult situation, so. So, yeah, I'm in support of the change.
Glenn?
My understanding of the edit of this particular ordinance, irrespective of the companies involved, is just the police office wants to have the most flexibility possible, and, again, like, uh, to actually Council Bracken's point, as long as we get the quality that our constituents expect, I'm for it. And if Chief comes up here and says, we should slightly edit this thing so that we can ensure that quality of service, I'm for it.
Okay, anyone else like to address it?
If I could recognize Chief Jones, um, I, I have a question. Um, I can't remember his last name, his first name's Mike, he's the owner of CarStar, but he had sent an email, um, talking about the fact that the gaps in service that had been reported by Mr. Refit, Refit were not actually gaps in service, that they had responded to those calls. Can you speak to that, please?
Um, sure, I don't have his email in front of me, but, uh, um, when, when we really dug into the, um, towing records, um, his average response time, Mr. Livecap's, uh, company's, uh, was 25 to 28 minutes, um, so that's average, and as, as I said, sometimes that means, you know, a 40-minute response time, and then sometimes maybe only a 15-minute response time. What he was referring to, though, in his email, was a report I generated after this all came up, after it became on the agenda, uh, that I received from Butler County Sheriff's Office, and that report was a missed call report, and as I, as I told him, I, I wasn't concerned with that, because there was clearly, it wasn't accurate, so, um, uh, yes, I, I don't believe they have missed that many calls, and when I look at Refit's, um, uh, coming in, they, they didn't really have that many calls during that same period, so, um, I guess, I wouldn't get into the, the weeds of that. I, I think the service provided by Mr. Livecap and his driver, um, Mr. Watson, who's here tonight, has, has, has been satisfactory, and, and has always been good for us. Um, but, uh, but I think, um, you know, Mr. Refit's also, also provides a really fast response and really good service as well, and, uh, and I understand his concern as well.
Because one of the things, I, I spoke to Mr. Livecap after the meeting, and, and then there was an email that came in to council about this, but the fact that he had left where he used to operate, this was many years ago, outside of the city limits, and moved into the city limits to comply with the ordinance, um, and the concern that, that a, a business owner can come to city council and say, hey, change it to accommodate where I'm at, um, was a cause for concern, and, and it's given me quite a bit of pause, in fact, um, because I think it's important to support local businesses, long-term local businesses. Now, purchasing property in Oxford, um, takes a little bit of a bite out of the argument, I think, although it would be nice if you operated your business in Oxford, um, although I know that's not necessarily going to happen overnight, steps, um, baby steps, I think, is what I'm seeing. My question to you, Chief Jones, is if this ordinance did not pass at this time, do you see that we would just be here again in a couple of years, in a year?
Well, I don't know, it's difficult to predict, and I think that's, um, you know, part of the reason, you know, we're presenting it here, is, is competition is good, I think. Um, uh, we're down to, you know, there, we used to have three to four companies on our list here in Oxford, and, and so I wouldn't have brought it to you then, um, but now we're down to essentially one wrecker service, two businesses, but one wrecker service that's eligible to come on our rotation list, and, uh, and while I wouldn't expect anything to happen to that, that business, uh, I think the industry may, may have changed, uh, you know, in the last 26 years, from, from when we're looking back to that. And that was a different company, um, that, that he was referring to, so.
Okay, thank you.
I share the pause. Um, I think that we need to support local business, and people who pay for local income tax, as well as the minimal property tax, and while I appreciate purchasing a, a plot of land, I think that that's only a first step, and it's not the last step, and, um, I think it sends a message to our other businesses in town, uh, that it doesn't matter that much to us. And, um, so I will be a minority, probably, on this one, but I would like to support local business, and I will be voting against it. Is there any further discussion?
Can I just ask a hypothetical, Chief, which is, this ordinance is really just about the geographical limits of who can serve us, but there is this idea of the rotation. If one wanted to have, okay, we want to permit businesses, but we wanted to give priority to local businesses, could the rotation be administratively the place where you do that, where you give, you weight, uh, the local businesses in the rotation, as opposed to, as opposed to doing it as an ordinance, would it be possible to do that? Um, I mean, that's a separate conversation from this, but, like, could the, could the rotation be weighted in favor of local businesses, where it's not, you're in, you're out, but you get some benefit from being local? Is that a practice in this kind of business, or not?
I'm, I'm not aware of it being a practice, um, the way it currently exists, as, as, you had mentioned earlier, uh, Mr. Livecap owns two businesses, that's, or, he has ownership in two businesses, uh, CarStar of Oxford and Oxford Car Care, and so, you know, several years ago, he set them both up in a rotation, because he uses that, uh, same wrecker service for both of those businesses. So, he was, um, you know, each business was receiving, um, more than, than, than the rotation, so if, if this ordinance change, changes, and then we, we do have administrative rules that, that have been alluded to, those are controlled, you know, that's, that's where I have a little bit of leeway to say, well, no, we, we expect you to be there in 20 minutes, or we expect you to be there in 30 minutes, and we can sit down with the owners and adjust that. But if this passes 30 days later, um, we could, uh, add, if Refit's, uh, sits down with us and, and agrees to the terms, they could be added to our rotation list, and they would, uh, they would be essentially the way, if it stays the way it is, they'd be getting a third of the business.
Okay. So, is that problematic, because it basically incentivizes people to make multiple businesses of one business, just to add more in the rotation?
I don't know, it could be, I mean, it's been, but, uh, but again, there, there are two separate businesses, they're not co-located, um, so there's multiple, and, you know, I mean, he's got, there's employees at Oxford Car Care, multiple employees there, um, paying income tax to the city, and then multiple employees at CarStar paying income tax to the city, so, um, you know, I, I don't know, that's, that's, this, uh, I, I didn't, I, I did not bring this ordinance, it came as a result of Mr. Refit, I mean, coming up and, 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 you know, bringing it to council, um, and I understand, I mean, we, we do call him, uh, when we need him, you know, so, uh, he's trying to expand his business. And then the other flip side is, is, uh, you know, I, I believe, um, CarStar, they serve on Oxford Township's rotation list, um, that's a separate list, and they could potentially get on Butler County's, you know, rotation list, but they're not on that right now, choose not to be, I believe. So, I mean, it, it's kind of competing against each other.
Go ahead, go ahead, and then I'll...
Well, Dave, to your point, I, I thought the same thing, and what we're actually voting on is eligibility and not administration, and when I'm looking at it at that face value, having the flexibility of companies that Oxford can draw upon if necessary, I consider to be a good thing. Regarding the administration of it, I don't have a say in that, that's between, like, Doug and Chief and, and other, the, those decision makers, I don't decide that, so, it wasn't... it wasn't a, a factor in me thinking about this particular ordinance.
To Bill's point, and I guess to Mr. Refit, I'm guessing you bought that plot of land with the intention of building on it, a wing of your business?
Yeah.
Come on up.
My original reason for buying that piece of property was if something failed in this change of an ordinance, I got to show you that I'm interested in this town. 3.1 miles, what isn't local about that? I mean, income tax? What is Car Star's name up on Miami Little League's billboard sponsoring all these families around here? Ours is. What about the Kiwanis breakfast? Who sponsors that? We do. Now, if I'm going to sponsor all these things in this town and get business off of it, what's any different than running toes? And if you're going to use me for a big wrecker, a heavy wrecker, to tow a semi, you're breaking your ordinance that you have right now. You see what I'm saying? Because nobody in this town has a heavy wrecker, but you use me because, I shouldn't say you have to, but nobody else is in the city limits. So if, why would you use me if you're going to break the ordinance? And it, and my second gripe is, is, I'm not pointing fingers, but why from December 25th till the middle of February, when I come in here and addressed my point, did I tow 12 vehicles for the city? A week after that, once word got back that I addressed this to you, I haven't towed one for you. So, it makes me question, oh, we better tighten up our belt a little bit. We're getting a little too relaxed on their end, because at one time, it was okay. Somebody else will run the call. It's all right. Don't worry about it. We'll get the next one. 2:00 AM comes. Who's running the call? Me. Who answered the phone? Me. And I still give you grade A service, but it's like I'm not good enough to run the day calls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone from staff want to address this before we move on?
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Ellerby?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
No. The ordinance is adopted. And we will move now to announcements and communications. We'll begin with City Manager Elliot.
I, I just, I just want to comment on the empty chair at the end of the table here. As we all know, you know, the city lost a great finance director, colleague and a friend. Joe Newlin did a great job for the, for the city of Oxford. He and I worked together for 15 years, did a lot of budgets and other projects together. You know, the finance information he provided us was always accurate, many times down to the penny, as we know. And one of his top priorities was always to make sure that the city was in a sound financial position. And I admired him for that, you know. As we know, each year, we received an award for excellence in financial reporting.
And that took a lot of work.
You know. And so I, I just wanted to say a few words. As we, as if you had a chance to read his obituary, he did a lot of volunteer work here in the city. He and I worked at a lot of wine and arc festivals, and he was a member of Lions Club and sold Christmas trees uptown, and many, many other things. So, you know, Joe will be dearly missed, and please keep his family in your thoughts. Thank you.
Nothing, sir.
Okay, Casey?
Good evening. Real quick announcement, since you brought up Arbor Day, next Friday is Arbor Day, and we will be having our annual tree ceremony at noon now at the Oxford Community Park. We are honoring three individuals who have had a tree planted in memory of them. And again, that's at noon. Those families will be there, and we're hoping maybe we can do something in the future in honor of Mr. Newlin as well. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sam?
Nothing, okay.
Jessica?
Nothing.
Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Glenn?
I'm going to miss Joe. I do not understand the House bill because when individuals try to pass legislation to prevent cultures from communicating to each other, that just causes dissent and problems, and it doesn't make any sense. And I thought that there were people in this town that didn't represent the values that we tried to uphold up here, and it was validated. And all I have to say about that is, thank you for letting me know so I can act accordingly. That's it.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks for saying that about Joe. And, sorry, it's just that. But I also wanted to make a note on, thanks to the Police Department's Animal Control, there was a cat that came in that was so obviously traumatized by a person, and, and that person was cited. And it's very concerning since people who abuse other people, it's reported that 71% of those people also abuse animals. So, it's so important, if you see something, say something. And I just appreciate the responsiveness and the quick nature that at least some, I don't think, it's not, the cat's going to be fine, but hopefully, it stops that guy from doing something in the future.
Thank you. Amber?
I'd like to say something about Senate Bill 83, and then I'd like to say something about Joe. I'm a speech-language pathologist, and I've had the privilege of teaching students here at Miami for 12 years. If you have a child with special needs, if you have a loved one who's had a stroke, traumatic brain injury, chances are you've engaged and worked with, collaborated with a speech-language pathologist. Our program is one of the top in the country for master's-only speech-language pathology programs. We place our students all over the country. And we are accredited by a body called the Council on Academic Accreditation. And that body accredits all speech pathology and audiology programs in the country that choose to be accredited. And they have certain standards that we have to abide by, and one is a standard called diversity throughout the curriculum. That standard requires that our programs teach about cultural and linguistic diversity to all of our students. It also says that we should be giving our students opportunities to reflect on implicit bias and how it affects the clinical service delivery that we give to our clients. I teach my students all the time that implicit bias is part of the human condition. We're all suspect or subject to having implicit biases. This bill would make it difficult for health science programs to comply with accreditation standards. These are programs that the state has decided to invest in because they lead directly to good jobs that are needed and growing in society. And so it doesn't make any sense to me that the state legislature would try to pass legislation that would actually put our accreditation status at risk and diminish our reputation nationally. I assign diversity papers in my class, and I've graded hundreds of them, and they all kind of mesh together over time. But there's one that I remember very specifically, and it was a student who wrote her paper on Appalachian Englishes. It's a white student who had Appalachian roots. And I talk in my class about racial disparities and stigmas, racism, but I also talk about linguisticism, which is discrimination against people who speak certain accents. And through the paper in my class, she took that opportunity to learn about her roots from Kentucky and to talk to her grandmother about whether or not she felt like she was discriminated against when she left Kentucky and moved north and west to Ohio, and her grandmother was. And because of that paper, she joined me for a lecture at the Hamilton Campus, the Center on Appalachian Studies, where a woman came to talk about Appalachian Englishes, and her grandmother came with her. And her grandmother said she had never felt so much pride in her history, in her language, in her culture, as she did in that talk. That's what diversity and inclusion can do in a classroom. And that's what the state legislature is trying to steal from the experiences that our students have, and it's making me angry. Because I love this town, I love my students, and I love the department in which I work and my profession. So, I stand with those of you who are against Senate Bill 83. We can't be good clinicians if we can't learn about the differences across race, gender, gender identity, accent, background, all of those things. So, I want to take a moment to talk about Joe. I haven't known Joe very long. But if you're a walker in this town, you know other walkers in the town. I knew Joe before I knew Joe, because I'd seen him walking around town. Joe was quiet and diligent in everything that he did, and I appreciated his humble swagger. Those two words sound like an oxymoron, but the way he moved through town, it really was like a humble swagger. And I'm going to miss him, and I know you all are too. So, I give my condolences to the city staff and the finance departments who's worked with him for a long time, and to his family as well.
Thank you. Joe will be missed. There's nothing to add, but as a concern.
So, first, I do want to touch on Senate Bill 83, and I want to say what I have to say, because I think we probably should draft a letter and adopt it by resolution and send it to our legislators and to our governor, because I think SB 83 is bad for education, it's bad for Ohio, and it's bad for the city of Oxford. You know, I mean, I think that if we want to communicate that Ohio's a retrograde, fearful place, where you, we're innovative, open-minded people ought not come, we can do that, or we need to protect the idea of the intellectual diversity and the openness to ideas that makes our university strong, and Miami's strong, Oxford's strong. So I think we have an economic development interest in that kind of stuff not happening. So, Alex kind of implied, you know, a desire to say something, and maybe I can work with Alex and work on some language for, to send. I would like to talk about Joe. Joe was quiet and diligent, and I think for those of you guys who are on the outside, it's hard to appreciate how much budgeting is at the core of everything the city does. I mean, some of what the city does is people, volunteer people, staff, but without money and the proper management of the money, we're not able to do the basic, high-quality things we do every day, maintain fire, police, security, clean water, treated sewage. But this city, we've managed to maintain excellence in the basic services while undertaking really big projects, you know, a new police building, a new municipal building, a new aquatic center, the, the Oxford Area Trail. Those are just some of the major capital projects. And to be able to maintain the high-quality services while doing the really big things, and, and credit goes obviously to the city manager, but would be difficult to do without a finance director. And, and so the teamwork between the city manager and the finance director, I can't imagine how hard that work would be, how detail-oriented it would be. It would be quiet, determined work, but because of that quiet, determined work, the rest of the city is able to flourish and do all the things for the citizens that it does. So, Joe contributed a lot in ways that most people on the outside, or, even on council, I don't think I begin to see a quarter of it. So, he will be missed, and I, of course, sympathize with his family, high school-age kids. Joe deserved to be around for longer, so.
Thank you. SB 83 is so wrong-headed and so obnoxious that it's hard to really put into words. It's, it, it has as its premise the idea that if people are stupid, then they can be controlled. And if they know less, then they can't, they won't say anything. I think it's wrong-headed, and I think it is anti-democratic, and I think it is bad, as you said, bad for Ohio. It's bad for the university. It's bad for the city. I, I get so angry about it that I have a hard time putting it into cogent words. And I am, I'm really affected by, as all of my colleagues are, the loss of Joe Newlin. When I first came back to the city, and I thought, who is this guy? And he goes down to every penny. And I came to decide, I love that guy. And he did go down to every penny because he watched the taxpayer dollar down to the penny. And there was never an error. He had it right. On top of that, he was a prince of a guy. And about an hour before he passed, I saw him, and I said, how you doing, Joe? He goes, I'm great. Everything's fine. And that's the way he was. Everything was fine, and, and he made it a good day. I want to commend the members of the Life Squad, Chief Deathridge's group. They were there so fast, and they took really good care of our friend. I want to commend the passersby who immediately started CPR and did everything they could for him. I guess the only solace is that it was fast, and we could all hope for that, but it was way too early. It's not fair. The man was 64 years old, and that is not old. And he did not deserve that, and his family doesn't deserve that. My heart goes out to his wife, Rochelle, to their three children. I, I can't imagine, and I don't think any of us can really fathom what it is like to lose your dad at that point, or your husband. We lost a valuable colleague, and it's affecting all of us deeply. And if we're short with people this week, we apologize, but I think we're all affected by it. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Amen.
Second. It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Or oppose. Thank you.